All right, I will call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to Order this Tuesday, July 1st at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Notice was posted at Hometown Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
All right, thank you. Approval of Agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We have two folks signed in here. If you'd wish to approach the podium, state your name and address, and you have the floor. Three minutes, please.
Yep, thank you. I'm Rick Terrell. I'm the President of Milton Youth Football. I'm here today to address our ongoing efforts and current challenges surrounding the development of new football fields for our youth program. Our initial conversation with the city began in November of 2024 when we expressed interest in acquiring land to build new football fields. At that time, we were directed to the city to collaborate, by the city to collaborate with YMCA, as the city was considering gifting a parcel of land to them. Shortly after, we met with the President of the YMCA who expressed enthusiasm about the idea of partnering with Milton Youth Football. We were told that developing football fields would be a great use of the land, and we were encouraged to begin planning and fundraising. As we monitored the council's proceedings leading up to the vote of gifting the land to the YMCA, it was our understanding, based on both the council meeting and the official minutes, that part of the intended use of that land included a partnership with Milton Youth Football for the development of said football fields. However, shortly after the council approved the land transfer, our leadership met with YMCA representatives to formalize an agreement. At that meeting, we were told that a long-term lease was no longer in the best interests of the YMCA, and they were now unsure about how they intended to use the land. When we reminded them the city's understanding in prior discussions, YMCA leadership firmly stated that the land is now solely theirs to use as they see fit, on their timeline, and without obligation to Milton Youth Football. This unexpected challenge, change, in our direction has been disheartening, especially considering that Milton Youth Football has already secured significant financial contributions and future commitments, including in-kind donations of services from respected local businesses and residents, all unsupported developing these football fields. Given this situation, we respectfully request that all references to Milton Youth Football be removed from any materials, plans, or discussions regarding the YMCA green space project and the YMCA's acquisition of the property adjacent to their facility. Based on our recent interactions, we believe it's not the YMCA's intent to partner with us in the ways previously discussed, and perhaps it never was. Moving forward, Milton Youth Football is now pursuing a new opportunity: the development of Wildcat Park. Wildcat Park will serve as a permanent home for Milton Youth Football. Our vision includes multiple football fields and equipped with scoreboards and eventually lighting and spectator stands. The park will be named to honor the legacy of Milton College, a historical and meaningful part of our community. We also plan to include a pavilion that pays tribute to past residents of Milton. Looking ahead, we hope to expand Wildcat Park to accommodate additional sports and recreational activities, creating a community-based space that benefits generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please know that we are deeply committed to our youth, our community, and to building a space that reflects the values and history of Milton.
Thank you. You sir also have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
It's gonna be tough for me to stay within three minutes.
That's why I have to remind you, okay?
I'm known for talking. My name is Scott Hudson. I live at 127 Forest Park Boulevard in Janesville, Wisconsin. I was born and raised in Milton Junction. I graduated from Milton Union High School in 1968, two days after Bobby Kennedy was assassinated. I graduated from Whitewater in 1972, and I've lived in Janesville for 53 years. However, with my physical presence in Janesville, my soul and my spirit is in Milton. I am a fifth-generation Hudson. My great-great-grandfather came here just after Joseph Goodrich settled on the Oak Ridge golf course. He had a wife and eight children. My youngest, the youngest of the eight kids was my great-grandfather who fought in the Civil War, Elijah Hudson, Company K, 13th Regiment, Second Wisconsin Volunteers. My grandpa graduated from Milton High School in 1913, Grandma in 1915, Dad dead in 1937. So I'm just leading up the fact that I am very involved spiritually with Milton. I am here in the support of Milton Youth Football. I'm gonna provide some money both now and down the road for it. I'm a big believer in youth football. I had six relatives come through here. One of them actually works for the City of Milton. Fletcher Terrell is my grandson. So I don't believe it's a good idea to partner with the YMCA. I really believe the Y has an important mission in the community, and with their Board of Directors, you know, they're gonna do what any Board of Directors does. They're gonna look out for the Y. They're not gonna look out for the citizens of Milton. They're not gonna look out for the youth of Milton. I don't think it's a good precedent to have a parcel of land that's owned by one entity but developed by another. I think really our long-term goal is either to get a piece of land here in the City of Milton to develop it ourselves, or in partnership, obviously, with the city. So like I said, you're gonna see me around a lot. You're gonna say, "What's that crazy Scotty Hudson up to now?" Because I hope to have two or three projects actually in Milton there for the next few years. I'm 75 years old, and I'm in it for the long term. I'm the guy that came up with the name Wildcat Park. I had a friend, Scott Shadle, donate some money also. He said, "What should we call it?" Well, we wanted to call it Junction Park, but we thought that would, a lot of Milton people wouldn't like that. So we'll go with Wildcat Park. So once again, I'm just here to support youth football, both financially, and hopefully behind any project that we do here in the future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak at this time? All right, moving on then. Agenda item number five, Merrill Proclamation, Independence Day. I will read this one aloud. "In recognition of Independence Day, July 4th, 2025, where is on July 4th, 1776, the 13 American colonies declared their independence from Great Britain, laying the foundation for the birth of the United States of America as a sovereign nation? And whereas the Declaration of Independence, a symbol of liberty and democracy, was adopted by the Continental Congress and has since stood as a powerful expression of the American ideals of freedom, equality, and justice? And whereas the 4th of July is the time for all Americans to reflect on our nation's history, to honor those who have fought to protect our freedoms, and to celebrate the values and principles that unite us as a people? And whereas the City of Milton, Wisconsin joins communities across the country in recognizing this historic occasion with pride and gratitude, and encourages residents to come together in a spirit of unity, patriotism, and celebration? And now therefore, I, Eric Stockman, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim July 4th, 2025, as Independence Day in the City of Milton, and encourage all residents to participate in activities that celebrate the freedoms we enjoy, to honor our shared history, and to uphold the enduring spirit of independence that defines our nation. Signed this first day of July, 2025." Agenda item number six, Approval of Minutes from June 17th.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number seven, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Special Event Permit Application Received from the Milton Softball Association for the Josh Pelton Memorial Event. Chief's not here, but do you know if there are any issues that we had with this, Paul?
Both Chief and Mark here did review it, and everything's, parameters are acceptable.
Do we have any questions as a council?
I guess I'd move to approve the special event permit for the Josh Pelton Memorial.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Special Event Permit Application Received from Milton Public Library for the Food Truck Rally. Again, I'll ask if there's any issues, Paul?
Again, both Chief and Mark here did review it. They found several issues with Ashley's food truck rally, but have decided to approve it irregardless of, no, they found nothing wrong with it, and they recommend approval.
Thank you for setting that precedent, Paul.
Sorry, Ashley.
I make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Milton Public Library for the food truck rally. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number nine, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Parking Options for Parcel V-23-1028.1.
Council has asked staff to present options for the parking lot located in Parcel V-23-1028.1. At the request of the Common Council, Public Works Director Langer and Chief Satchi and I developed three options for considerations. The first option is to return the parking lot to the owners who provided it to the city to begin with. Rock County Register of Deeds has records to provide guidance on what section was provided by each property owner. Staff recommends requiring stormwater easement to maintain the storm drain that the city installed. Staff also recommends that access easements be drawn up for each individual property so that all owners may enter the lot. Public access to the parking lot would be discontinued, but plenty of parking is provided by the city on Parkview Drive. The second option is to remove the four spots to the north to allow Mr. Ripperberger permanent access to his garages. Parking lot would remain open to the public. The city would resume snow removal activities for the lot. The third option is to provide permit, parking permits for this parking lot. This option is less desirable to the staff because of the need to develop and enact a permit process, enforcement issues, and the possible request of other areas wanting to have permit-only parking in other areas of the city. This would also restrict public use and allow only a certain few to benefit from city-owned property. The city would resume snow removal activities for the lot. For the fiscal impact, option one would have an upfront expense for the city of subdividing the parking lot and developing quick claim deeds to disperse of the parcels. Option two and three include permanent long-term snow removal and maintenance expense. Option three would also require creation of a new ordinance, develop of a permit system, and staff time to process and enforce permits. City administration asks for guidance on this issue.
Typically, I'd ask if there's anybody who wants to speak on this, but you're already there. So, and if we could, everyone's been sticking to three minutes.
Sure.
So just your name, please, and address.
Robert Ripperger, 635 Greenman Street, Milton, Wisconsin. And I, Paul, I think one thing I didn't maybe hear in there, you did mention about the stopping or omitting the three parking stalls that we talked about at the last meeting, but I didn't know if I heard anything about getting three stalls for TLC Reservations in there for parking?
Staff is not recommending assigning parking in a public parking lot.
Okay.
As that option.
Okay.
I think the preferred option for staff would be option number one, and just returning it to the previous parcel, property owners, and then maintaining the easements for any repair that we need to do.
Rip, may I ask you, on option one, questions or do you have concerns about option one?
Well, I'm not sure how option one works. You know, that just puts Eric and I in charge of the parking lot, and we just work together and decide how to maintain it, take care of it, and who parks where and what we do.
Essentially, that'd be correct.
Okay.
Do you have any concerns or questions that?
No, that seems reasonable. Does that work for you?
And we know for sure that Eric and Rip are the only, sorry Bob, are the only property owners.
Yes.
Yes.
I do have concerns about that option with businesses accessing the back of their building for things like loading, unloading, things like that, that they normally have access to.
Those businesses are owned by the property owners. The businesses exist, and the property owners who own the parking, Eric's buildings specifically.
Right, some of the rented, or the businesses on the bottom.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Eric owns the property.
Right.
So those businesses lease from Eric.
Paul, if I hear you saying...
So they may have parking, depending on how they...
How the owner of the property decides.
They still have parking. The easements wouldn't go away, in and out.
Yeah.
So all tenants would still have access to their commercial or residential if they live there.
Is there enough parking in those lots for all of the tenants?
If every single, it would be tight. If every single, every single tenant parked, it would be tight. But it's no worse than it is today, if anything. I mean, other than putting stacked garages. I mean, there's a large area back there that's gravel right now, and I think the whole back lot could be reconfigured and change the direction of parking to add parking spots if we went this way.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you went with option number one, correct?
I think we'd gain parking.
Yes.
So, looking at the future, we aren't taking away any public, like, this isn't affecting the community at all?
There would not be allowed, public parking would not be allowed back there. Currently, I could park there and park my car.
Right.
If it goes back to the owners, the owners would be in control of who parks on their property. And maybe they graciously let me park there, but they wouldn't have to.
But it does, in my opinion, you've done it quite a bit, and it seems like there's more than adequate parking for the activities that take place down there on a regular basis. I mean, are there always gonna be something that's gonna pop up, or we're gonna have parking issues? Yeah, I mean, that happens now regularly anyway, even with or without the, that lot. So I guess, for me personally, looking at any of the options, but I, you know, especially option one, I don't know how, to me, how big of a negative impact that's gonna have on the community, when there's all of the additional parking that's down there to start with. And typically, when we have those nighttime events where we see the most traffic, the school's empty anyway, and everybody ends up using that parking as well, just for those activities for that short-term time. So.
I guess I'll make a motion to move forward with option one for the parking lot located at Parcel V-23-1028.1.
I'll second that motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Is that going to include the, maintaining the easement so that the city can get in there to maintain the drainage and things like that?
Thank you, Alderman, Ken, Smith. I'll amend my motion to include the easement as recommended by the staff.
All right, I'll second that. Thank you for the clarification. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to mention, we would be bringing this back to council once everything's pieced out and ready to move forward.
We'll vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rip. Agenda item number 10, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Ordinance 2025-565 Regarding Repeal of Sunset Clause of ATV Ordinance.
The ATV ordinance that the council passed in 2024 sunsets, the council must determine if they would like to continue allowing ATVs on city streets. In May 2024, the City Council approved Ordinance 533 and created Chapter 70, Article 7, allowing for the use of ATV UTVs on city streets. In August of 2024, the final signs were installed, and the city opened its streets to ATVs and UTVs. The City Council placed a provision in the ordinance to terminate the ordinance after one year. The City Council act and approved another ordinance. This ordinance would allow for the continuation of ATV/UTV use on city streets in the same manner as the previous year. There's no fiscal impact for passing this ordinance. City administration recommends approving Ordinance 2025-565. Enactment of an ordinance requires first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived, the same time the first reading is completed. Would like to mention, Brendan, Chief Satchi did review this. We spoke extensively on this, and that there has been very few instances of ATV/UTV police interaction, much less than he was expecting, and much less than his staff was expecting. So he is for continuing to allow ATVs in the city.
And I would just put in that every person that I've talked to since, about this, since we allowed this in the city, has had one person put a hoot in half. Yes, overwhelmingly, people have been happy with the ability to just, it just makes driving down Madison Avenue just a little bit funner, because it's a pretty boring drive. You know, if we can do that, we'd have a fun place to live. I'm all for it.
And I think there is a concern that we would be flooded with ATVs, but I rarely see them still, so.
Mostly, more people going grocery shopping than I thought with their ATVs or their UTVs, so.
I will note that the township did just pass a UTV/ATV ordinance, and so we may be seeing a little bit more of an influx once everything's signed out in the township.
Oh, one question I have is, so we're basically proposing renewing the ordinance that would have a one-year sunset clause again?
We are removing the sunset clause from the ordinance.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-565 and waive the second and third readings.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number 11, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Capital Improvement Plan Amendment 2025 through 2031.
This capital improvement plan amendment that's prepared should be used as a tool for planning and guiding budgetary decisions for future years. It's intended to be a living document. It should be adjusted to account for unknown and unanticipated circumstances while considering policies and costs used to create the plan. Should be regularly reviewed to ensure that future decisions and recommendations are appropriate for the current economic climate, infrastructure needs, and funding available for completion of projects or purchase of capital equipment. There's a lot of discussion here. This is kind of similar to what you saw prior in the 2021 approval. You know, we know the challenges faced by municipalities, unfunded mandates, limited taxing authority, ability to increase revenues through taxing, and aging infrastructure are issues that are addressed through capital improvement planning. The documents attached to this, the first attachment is an exhibit showing the approved 2021 through 2025 capital improvement plan with project status indicated. You'll notice that we did do a pretty good job of accomplishing the goals that were listed in that plan. There's still a few either ongoing, which are more like a routine maintenance-type improvement, or some projects that are currently underway, or that are currently planned to be completed in 2025. Exhibit two includes the proposed 2025 through 2031 amendment. So it's including some of the projects, well, all the projects again in 2025, some that were not initially included in the previous approved document, as well as the future years 2026 through 2031. Again, those out years will likely have some movement and change as projects, needs change or come to light, or different funding sources may become available. Staff is recommending approval of the capital improvement plan 2025 through 2031 shown in Exhibit two as presented, or if council feels there's any changes or additions or modifications they would like to make, we could do that, too.
Anybody have any thoughts here?
Well, then I guess if there's no thoughts.
No thoughts.
Even ones I hear. I would move to approve the capital improvement plan 2025-2031 shown in Exhibit two as presented or with requested changes.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any thoughts? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number 12, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Agreements for Wastewater Treatment Plant Facilities Planning.
At the April 15th, 2025 meeting, the Common Council, upon recommendation of the Public Works Committee, selected Strand Associates to perform wastewater treatment plant facilities planning. The attached agreement for technical services and task order outlined the requirements of the project, as well as the responsibilities of both parties. Task Order 2501 details the scope of services, compensation, and schedules for the project. The components of the final facilities plan document will generally include what's listed there. It will have an executive summary, introduction, existing wastewater conveyance facilities, existing wastewater treatment plant, and then waste load and flow forecast, regulatory, and WPDS permitting issues, evaluation of existing facilities, and screening of possible alternatives, identification and evaluation of treatment alternatives, and then alternative selection and fiscal impact analysis, as well as an environmental analysis summary, and public participation. The task order also includes assistance with preparing a report required by our current WPDS permit that is required to be submitted to the WDNR before year end. The task order number 2501 includes an estimated not-to-exceed fee of $80,000 for the completion of the facilities plan. This was budgeted for in the 2025 sewer utility budget. City administration recommends approval of the agreement for technical services with Strand Associates, as well as the approval of Task Order number 2501 for wastewater facilities planning.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one. By the way, I went the other day, yesterday, to tour. If you haven't done it yet, recommend it. Juan will give you... Recommend it. Uh Lon will give you more information you ever thought you'd get about wastewater treatment. But like I said, the next time when we talk about this, it won't be the first time I've talked about it, so. Uh but I did have a question about the for the agreement for technical services with Strand under the the dispute resolution sect paragraph. If it goes to arbitration, who pays for that? Is it a mutual payment? Is it the person who brings the dispute? How does that work? I know in some contracts, when you go to, when you when you have a an arbitration clause in there. Whoever brings that arbitration, that complaint and wants to get arbitration, that person's the one who pays for it. How's the there's no, doesn't delineate that in this.
As I'm reviewing that, does the dispute resolution. Uh begins with a requirement to first go to mediation, not arbitration. And uh then uh then if there's no agreement, then there'd be a a bench trial in Rock County. And mediation is non-binding, but your your question is then who pays for it? Yeah, you're right. It doesn't detail that. Traditionally, it would be the each of the parties would pay. In equal, would pay their share. So for the mediator, each of the parties would split the cost of that, and if they're represented by council, they need to pay their own council.
I realize it's a small point, everything else, but I I was curious about that.
No, that's 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 appropriate, but yeah, so that's that would be the normal procedure.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the agreement for technical services with Strand Associates and task order number twenty-five dash oh one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we have to have the not to exceed eighty thousand in there or not? It's it it, okay.
All right, good question. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Number thirteen, discussion of possible action declaring items as surplus.
Paul, the first department is requesting authorization to declare the following items as surplus. A two thousand nineteen Ford Explorer four door all-wheel-drive SUV that was previously used by the police department. In nineteen ninety-eight, Isuzu Diesel single-axle cab over dump truck and bicycles that have been acquired by the police department. Council policy number five says that any item with an estimated value of over two thousand dollars requires common council approval to be declared surplus. Recovered and unclaimed items that were not purchased by the city require common council approval to be declared surplus. The Ford Explorer again is a previous police vehicle. Uh that has been replaced as part of routine vehicle replacement. The public works department also recently purchased a replacement water truck and it was some shifting around of the equipment. The existing truck was. Um a two thousand nine model that was modified to replace another truck that was then moved down in the fleet further to replace this parked truck, which will. Is being requested to be surplus. Um the Isuzu, it does need a transmission work and and other work if it is intended to be kept. And just being the age and um it's not not needed now with the other equipment that's been purchased. And then the bicycles again were recovered by police department. So staff is just uh recommending or requesting a motion to authorize staff to use the Wisconsin surplus auction process for these items.
Thank you, Mark.
Just have a quick question, just a curiosity thing. How many bicycles have they got to hit two thousand dollars? I mean, most of the bicycles recovered.
Uh it's not because.
Basically not the greatest bikes in the world.
So the bicycle isn't because it's two thousand, it's because it was not purchased by the city. That's part of the policy.
I was hoping you were gonna say, we got like, I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Or we got, never mind.
I think Ken will buy one of those bikes, so.
Any other questions or funny comments about Ken? Sorry.
I make a motion to authorize staff to use the Wisconsin surplus auction process for listed items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six commission appointments.
Mayor Duckman is recommending the following citizen appointments for the historic preservation commission. I'm gonna butcher this name, Jason Delick. Delkey, sorry, Jason. And uh plan commissioner Nicholas Claus. And these appointments must be confirmed by the common council.
Just looking for if any questions or otherwise a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six commission appointments. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. General items, uh we'll start with committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Anything on fire you want to share from the meeting you sat in or? Don't want to put you on the spot. It's fine.
Basically, they just, I did attend, and it wasn't more of a, it wasn't a committee or commission. It was just really a a public hearing or briefing. Uh for the new fire district and how it's going to proceed. Uh they had um all the players that were involved. Uh with the project there to explain their part and where we were at and the history and everything going back to it, costs associated with it. I would recommend to everyone that when they have those that you attend, there's a lot of moving parts uh with this. Uh the the grunt work is not done yet. A lot of people, I I think the feeling is that since. Removed past, you know, everything's kind of agreed upon, and now we're in that next phase that the hard work's done and it's not. And so it's, I think it's important for the citizens to get there. I I mean, I I'm not gonna go through my notes. My notes look like chicken scratching. You caught me off guard. So I, they were there for me to try to figure out exactly what I saw. But I do believe. And and I just wanted for anybody listening out there too. It's important that our community, when we have an issue this big, and I think it is, when you have to look at the police and fire and EMS and DPW and all of these. These org, these parts of the city that work for the city that take care of us and take care of what we love about the city. It's important to come and how, listen and ask questions and have a voice. And unfortunately, turnout wasn't that great. It was a little disappointing. There's already people that were already heavily involved with it and already knee-deep into the quagmire. And I I can't do it justice trying to explain it. I'll look like an idiot up here babbling if I try. Uh that's why you need to come and listen to the experts talk, the people that do this every day. It and it's so, I I'm gonna say it again, and then I'll shut up. It's important, and you need to be there. There's a lot of work left to be done. And that's that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ken. Sorry, won't do it to you again.
You will, Ken, you will.
Well, I'll try. That was, that was good, though. That's good. Thinking on your feet. All right, uh staff reports. Mark.
The Northwest Streets paving project, uh the asphalt surface is installed, restoration remains. So that project is nearly complete. We had the pre-construction meeting last Friday for the Tid Seven project. That's Merchant Road, Vernon Avenue, Buton Morgan, and First Lane. They're looking to start that work uh later in July. And really just, oh, Shamway Pond, there's a lot of earth being moved, so that's gonna take them a little while to get that completed. But um otherwise, yeah, working through the capital improvement plan. So that, thank you for uh looking at that and approving that, and and like Ken said, we offer uh free treatment plant tours during normal business hours, so. And it is, it is good. I mean, I agree. I mean, I I encourage people to, it's. It's eye-opening, I think, for a lot of folks that don't, that aren't in that world, right, to see it and learn about it, so.
Great, thank you.
And when people look about how fiscally responsible we are, we have a pump that was put in in nineteen twenty. Nineteen friggin' twenty, man, and it's still going. That that's not being loosey-goosey with with the budget and with the with the taxpayers' money. I I was fairly impressed by that. I was like, you gotta be freaking kidding me, man. This thing's still there. It was noisy, but it was down there. And it, oh, and it stinks. It, one knows.
Thank you, Mark and Ken for that. Paul.
First, I would like to thank Chief Sacksy. Um obviously, this past weekend, we had a missing young girl. And uh the police department worked admirably. Um I'd like to thank the residents of the of the city of Milton. They turned out in massive numbers uh to to help this community, and it really is a testament to what this community is. Um and it's just wonderful to see that. Um thankfully, everything uh worked out. And uh but the police uh did an excellent job uh leading that with the fire department, and I just want to commend them. Uh second, I'd like to commend Kelsey and Mark on this uh capital improvement plan. Uh they have stuck hours into that, and uh it's uh really nice to see that come to fruition. Um so I want to make sure that they're recognized and thanked. Couple things that I've been working on, uh the comp plan, uh we have begun doing interviews with key stakeholders. Um I think you may know people that have been talked to already, uh but that's going on right now. I just reviewed a survey that's gonna be going out. Um probably in the next week or two. Um it's an excellent survey. I'm excited about that. Um we, Kelsey and I have been working on the bond that uh anticipate you'll be seeing at our next meeting. Um that is gonna be for this year's and next year's projects. Uh and we've uh talked to bond council, uh been interviewed by bond council. Uh earlier this week, we sat down and talked to Moody's Rating Agency. Um they are gonna continue our big A, small A two rating, uh which is a really, really strong rating uh for our community of this size. Um smaller communities, it's hard to get a real high rating. Derek probably knows more about this. Uh but uh that went very well. Um a lot of work going into that, and you'll see the fruition of that next meeting. Uh finally, last uh week, I was able to go to the WCMA conference. It's the City Managers Association for Wisconsin. Um excellent conference, uh learned about new laws, new trends going on, uh being able to talk to my peers and learn a lot about uh. City management, so it was a busy two weeks.
Thank you. Ashley.
Um our friends of Milton Public Library book sale is happening right now, and will go throughout the month of July, so funds raised from that book sale help um fund library programming, special collections. And then the scholarships we give to graduating seniors at the end of the school year. Um our outdoor digital sign message center is installed and working now, so next time you drive by the library, you'll see that lit up. Um Kat, our teen summer intern, an audience there, um has been to the library for a few weeks now, learning all about the library and helping us with programs. So sort of be there through the end of August, and then we're just staying busy and having fun at the library, as always.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have much to add. I would echo everything that Paul said about the little girl gone missing, and when we're asked uh as a council. And when we're asked, what are the great things about Milton? I think we we think of a lot of different things, growth and maybe the library, the gathering place. But above all that is how we treat one another and how we come together as a city. And I know you said it, Paul, but I think it was really awesome to see. Everybody care for one another and come out, and I think that you don't find that in other communities, and that's what makes us different, and I think it's awesome, so. So for our team-building exercise, what is the last thing that you did for the first time? So the last thing you did for the first time, last time that you did something for the first time. What was it?
I got to go on a lobster boat tour on vacation. That was pretty cool.
Okay, that's cool. That counts. That's good, yep.
I ate a ghost pepper. At the last community days. Yes, there was a lady with, didn't mean to, funny story, didn't mean to. There was a lady at the community day selling uh West African food. It was delicious. She had a hot sauce and. So she, I put a little on the side, and uh so I was sort of just sort of touching the food to it. And then I was stopped in at Good Works Brewery, having a beer, talking to a friend of mine, as I was doing it, and absentmindedly mixed it into my whole plate without thinking, as you're chatting. And then took a bite. Yeah, I don't ever want to do that again. It really doesn't. Nothing helps. You just cry. You just cry.
So many questions. None are appropriate for right now, so.
I I'm sorry.
I visited Lake Superior for the first time uh last week, or the weekend before last. Yeah, my wife ran a marathon, and that's where we were, and. It's amazing how the temperature changes constantly up there. I was not ready for it.
I think of recent that the first time being part of a search party for somebody. I've never done that before.
That's true. I liked sod. I had never rolled out a lot of sod in the yard. I'll throw that out there while Charlotte tries to think of something, but.
And all of you in the audience will be expected to participate, so you need to be thinking, just so we're clear.
Okay, Wes, when? He was quick with his slop boil.
The only thing I can think of is I never, I guess.
A microphone, please.
Seriously, I'm really loud in my ear. I can hear just fine. Last time I did something for the first time was, I think, with an amazing committee. I never thought I saw my, oh, did I? Sorry, we we uh ran a triathlon for youth. We organized and executed for the first time.
We did run it. We organized.
Let's be very, very clear. I did not do the triathlon. No.
I'm thinking, how does it feel to beat little kids if you're in the youth triathlon?
I know. Well, I mean, the five-year-olds were a little easy, but the ten-year-olds were a little, just kidding, that's all I got. Sorry, Ashley.
Yes, I was part of a wonderful committee that helped plan a mountain youth try, and it was amazing turnout. We had fifty-four youth participate in it. I think that was great for our first time. We will hopefully be doing it again next year, and it was lots of fun. We had a great team. We had a great support from our sponsors and communities and volunteers, um so it was amazing.
Could you pick a cooler day next time?
Um I'm gonna not pick that one. Uh training someone at work for the first time. In this particular field, so.
Perfect. Attorney.
Last time I did something for the first time, well, that would be. About forty-five minutes ago when I watched a train go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth for about seventeen, eighteen minutes, so.
That explains a lot, okay. All right, guys, you can just yell it out. We gotta hear it, then we can go. Very good. Yep. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Ladies.
I wrote ghost hunting, sort of like a story, so I went at the Lincoln Hall and House. Like a flashlight turned on and like it then just stopped working, because the batteries were like fresh. And then it just stopped working, and it couldn't turn on, and then all of a sudden it turned on again, so.
Ah, good one. That's the idea. Alright then, our next meeting date is July fifteenth. Look forward to seeing you all at the Fourth of July festivities at the parade. Wait, flag me down, I'll give you an icy. I'll be near the beginning of the parade. I can't throw things, Charlotte, don't get me in trouble, please. You can.
Confessions with Charlotte. So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.